Good evening, everyone. Call of water, first order of business. You roll call, please.
Alderman Cole. Alderman Clark Harbor.
Here.
Mr. Banton.
Present.
Mr. Boas. Mr. Bradley.
Present.
Mr. Garminia.
Present.
Mr. Keon.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
It's not, it's not.
Judge Rother.
Present.
Mr. Boas. Present.
What an extra.
Sorry.
Um, the mic's down there. Um, these ones don't work.
Okay.
So with that, we do have a form. First order of business is the approval of the minutes. I'll approve, I'll accept the motion and approve the minutes that are submitted.
I'll second.
Move by Commissioner Alderman Clark Harbor, second by Commissioner Cal. Call for vote.
Alderman Clark Harbor.
Hi.
Commissioner Banton.
Hi.
Commissioner Boas.
Present.
Mr. Bradley.
Hi.
Mr. Garminia.
Hi.
Mr. Keon.
Hi.
Judge Rother.
Hi.
And motion passes with six voting, I don't want to pitch it.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have a short agenda before doing that. Uh, one of the things is we misplaced the name tag. Uh, I don't know, there might be in my briefcase somewhere, my own briefcase. Uh, I'm gonna ask the commissioners to identify themselves on my part right and working now.
Good evening, Grace Penn. Uh, do you need us anything else, Chair? Tracy Boas.
I mean, Clark Harbor.
Chair Earl Srother in online. We have Commissioner Jake Banton, Commissioner Rich Bradley, and Commissioner Christine Garminia at this time. Uh, of course, hoping that Alderman Jacob is by itself, he is strictly with that thing called COVID that no longer exists anymore. Uh, with that, we have two items of business. The first one will, uh, require a public hearing after the presentation. So if you're present, there's a sign and a registration sheet with Michelle on my left and your right. Uh, please register for your statements at this time. If you're online, please identify yourself in the chat. And we'll, I did, we'll accept that at the appropriate time when that comes up for, uh, open public hearing. So the first order of business is, uh, is a public hearing, one, I'm sorry, is amendment number three on Washington University. Who's presenting? Mary is presenting, so welcome to the podium.
Yeah, thank you, and I'll be presenting over here this evening. That's how the sound is working tonight. Uh, so good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. I'll be presenting as the Chair described, the first action item.
Let me check, uh, Commissioner Bradley, are you able to hear? Just pointing. Very good, okay.
Thank you. Next slide, please. For this first action item that I'm presenting is proposed amendment to the Washington University Community Unit Plan. And this item includes, of course, an overview and description of the proposed amendment, a public hearing, and, and a vote. So, next slide, please. This item was initiated by an application submitted by Washington University Medical Center and its affiliates to add five parcels to the existing Washington University Medical Center Community Unit Plan boundary. The, uh, Community Unit Plan initially approved, uh, approved, excuse me, by ordinance in 2008 has been amended two times and contains about 142 acres currently. And before we get into the details of this proposed amendment, want to provide a little bit of background about community unit plans or CUPs in general, since this is, um, not an item that comes before the Commission frequently. So what is a community unit plan? It's basically an overlay zoning districts enabled within the city's code that provides certain, uh, sort of advantages and simplicities to applicants interested in large, unique, or mixed-use development. Similar in a way to planned unit development, but it, it's a different tool. There are actually just two CUPs in the city. One for the Washington University St. Louis Danforth Campus, and one for the Washington University Medical Center Campus, and that is the CUP we're, uh, discussing tonight. Something I'll get into a little bit later in the presentation is that, kind of as outlined in our zoning code, proposed amendments to CUPs are evaluated using specific criteria defined in the code in addition to comparisons against the comprehensive plan or the strategic land use plan as we conventionally do. Next slide, please. So what about this CUP? It was initially adopted in 2008 by ordinance and has been amended two times since. And as you can see at the bottom, both amendments have dealt simply with revising the geographic boundaries, either adding parcels or removing parcels to align the boundary with the current, uh, ownership of Washington University Medical Center and its affiliate institutions. So what does the CUP allow? Basically, uh, greater height and density than underlying districts in ways that make sense for the development that's part of that campus. It lifts setback requirements, uh, that are put in place by underlying zoning districts, and it enables a broad range of uses relevant to Washington University Medical Center, that are not explicitly allowed in underlying zoning districts. So things like healthcare, uh, medical and other research, education, et cetera, things of that nature, um, to ensure that, uh, entitlements within this CUP align with the, uh, envisioned development associated with, uh, Washington University Medical Center. Next slide, please. So here, this slide shows the current, uh, CUP boundary in sort of that dark blue, as well as the five parcels proposed to be added by this amendment number three. The application itself also includes an updated land use plan, which simply describes, uh, recent construction and, uh, proposed uses. That's included as part of the resolution. But there are these five parcels, uh, proposed to be added, uh, as part of this amendment. So 4367 Duncan Avenue, that's number one. Three different parcels, all on Forest Park Avenue, and then 4101 Clayton Avenue, which is that, um, that larger parcel, the far southeast parcel. This amendment does not include any, you know, quote-unquote text amendments, so no changes to allow height or density or any of those other things that are enabled in the Washington University Medical Center CUP. This is simply a proposed boundary amendment to the CUP. Next slide, please. So here you can see all of the underlying zoning, zoning districts, and this map really emphasizes one of the values of an overlay tool like the CUP, is that it significantly, significantly simplifies the development process while I vote for Washington University Medical Center and the city through this overlay that allows and supports the unique uses associated with this campus and its development. Next slide, please. So here, I just wanted to do a quick walkthrough. Each of these parcels are really areas of parcels proposed to be added. So the first, 4367 Duncan Avenue, currently being used as a service parking lot, and the proposed long-term use could include medical center development and/or structured parking. I'll add that, uh, my knowledge, Washington University Medical Center has no, you know, specific short-term development plans for any of these parcels. This is simply a requested or proposed update to align CUP boundaries with their current, uh, property ownership. Next slide. Numbers two through four, all Forest Park Avenue ad- addresses. Uh, recently, along with sort of smaller adjacent properties, all on Forest Park Avenue, included smaller apartment buildings that have since been demolished, I believe, in, uh, 2021, in order for these properties to be used as temporary construction staging areas and, uh, working, uh, worker parking, construction worker parking to serve the construction of the neuroscience research building, which, uh, I'm sure many of us driving around the city have seen, uh, you know, very much up and out of the ground. A, a very large new development. The proposed long-term use of these parcels described in the application, um, include his medical center development and uses of, of, of. Next slide, please. The fifth parcel proposed to be added is 4101 Clayton Avenue. This actually has been, uh, developed already, and you'll see pictures of this later, with the BJC at the Commons Building, which is a five-story, 220,000 square foot office building on, on this parcel, and you'll see this is actually very close to the, um, Cortex Metrolink Station. Next slide. And as you detail in the resolution before the Commissioners and listed online, CUPs and CUP amendments are required by our ordinance to be evaluated against three specific criteria, and that's what is listed, or are listed on the slide, uh, shown here. So this resolution details the analysis. I'll provide, um, a, a brief summary. Uh, so the, the first criteria is, uh, next slide, please. Oh, no. We've skipped ahead to the wrong slide.
What do you want to do?
I'm not sure. Well, okay, so it seems we're missing some slides. I'll just add a little bit and, and describe this, uh, for you all, um, rather than searching for a file or anything like that. Um, so the, the first evaluation criteria is that the values of buildings and the character of the property adjacent to the area included in the plan will not be adversely affected. So, um, the evaluation here is that Washington University Medical Center and its partners are, of course, a huge economic engine for the region, one of the region's largest employers, and the proposed long-term uses of each of those properties, um, added, uh, proposed to be added to the Community Unit Plan boundary would add to the value of the medical center and have a positive impact on surrounding properties. And, uh, notably here, actually, most of the property adjacent to the area included, um, is actually also owned by Washington University Medical Center or its affiliates, and already included within the Community Unit Plan boundary. The second criteria is that, uh, that the said plan would be consistent with the intent and purposes of the zoning code to promote, uh, public health, safety, morals, and general wel- welfare. The proposed short and long-term uses of these properties is, um, of course, consistent with the zoning code's overriding purpose as stated here, but also, um, very much consistent with the CUP's permitted uses related to healthcare, research, education, and so on. The third and final criteria here, um, is a lengthy one, and a little complicatedly worded, but in short, uh, since the proposed future uses actually don't include residential use, this criteria actually doesn't apply to this specific amendment. Um, I'll, I'll continue, even though there would be some helpful visuals here in, in the slide. So most of the CUP boundary, um, if you would skip back out to one of the maps. Up a couple more things. So most of the area in the existing Community Unit Plan boundary is actually an institutional preservation and development area, uh, which, uh, the Commission knows well as a designation within our strategic land use plan that, um, refers to, uh, the intent to really promote the development of, um, institutional uses in those areas. The parcels proposed to be added to, uh, the Community Unit Plan boundary, so all of those parcels outlined in purple are actually the, the especially mixed-use areas, which are areas described by our, by our strategic land use plan as areas like downtown where it's intended that a unique mix of uses be preserved and developed. So, you know, these properties, um, while maybe ideally might be designated as institutional preservation and development area, the CUP amendment would actually allow for development that is very much in keeping with that specially mixed-use area designation, which is that unique mix of uses like downtown to be preserved and developed. Um, and also, as discussed last month in relationship to the weak collapse Strategic Land Use Plan Amendment, that institutional preservation and development area category actually kind of under review as part of the strategic land use process, um, strategic land use plan update process. And so, um, you know, certainly that didn't contemplate a, a smooth amendment at this time with that. Um, so I think with, with that, I will close my presentation. Um, unfortunately, missing here, the, the typical tour of the sites. Um, but described them a little bit already, that those on Forest Park Avenue are currently surface parking lots, and the one on Clayton Avenue near the Metrolink Station, um, much of it a surface parking lot, but the, the west end of it developed as that, uh, BJC at the Commons Office Building, the five-story office building there already. So, uh, with, with that, I'll close. If, um, zoning Minister Mary Hart Burton is online, I know she had a Board of Adjustment meeting running quite late this afternoon, but I wanted to offer her the opportunity to fill in any gaps I may have missed.
With that, uh, Chair does very good welcoming. Good afternoon. We've had a comments or conversations at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no comments. Um, Miriam did an excellent job. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, prior to me recognizing the Wash U team, uh, we will be opening a public hearing in a moment. If you are here for that purpose, I ask that you register with Michelle on my left and to your right. If you're online, please make a comment, uh, in the, in the, uh, chat, and we'll identify you at the appropriate time. Uh, I believe Robert Blaine, are you the, are you the member? I'll ask that you step over there and use a little bit of your outside voice.
I will try and project.
And you can introduce the rest of your team.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the Commission. My name is Robert Blaine. I'm Assistant Vice Chancellor for Medical Public Policy at Washington University. Here on behalf of the institutions that make up the Washington University Medical Campus, namely Barnes Jewish Hospital, St. Louis Children's Hospital, part of the BJC Healthcare System, and, um, the Washington University School of Medicine. Um, with me tonight are some colleagues, Greg Bradshaw, Director of Public Policy with BJC Healthcare, Joanna Schooler, um, Assistant Vice Chancellor for Community Relations and Local Government Affairs, and Steve Sobo, um, who is the Executive Director for Strategic Projects for our School of Medicine. So Joanna and Steve are both with Wash U and Greg with BJC Healthcare. Um, again, we just wanted to thank the Commission, um, for the opportunity to bring this request to you tonight. Um, and particularly, I wanted to thank the staff in planning and urban design and the building division for their guidance, not only with this request, but over the 15-year his, history of this, um, zoning tool that we've had in place with the city. You know, the Washington University Medical Campus, um, has been in existence for over 110 years. You know, the medical school alone moved to that campus in 1915 to be in closer proximity with the hospitals that have now evolved to be part of the BJC Healthcare System. Um, and collectively, we are, you know, committed to delivering world-class medical care, innovative medical research, and training the next generation of leaders in medicine and biosciences. And the opportunity to work with the city, um, to continue to enhance, um, this campus and bring the resources to do, to, um, achieve those missions has been greatly appreciated. Um, uh, Miriam did a wonderful job explaining, you know, the, the concept behind the CUP. There's really very little we could add, other than just to emphasize how much we've appreciated having one consistent set of zoning guidelines and standards for, again, a large campus of 142 acres. And we would also, I think, say that it has improved our relationship and our working process with the city, having that in place, and again, the opportunity to, um, um, consider, uh, all those provisions as we think of, um, the future of what this campus is going to look like. Um, again, we are simply looking to adjust the boundary line for, uh, the CUP to reflect our current real estate holdings. Uh, we've done this twice before. Um, we try every three to five years, um, depending on what's been happening recently to make sure that we're visiting that boundary line to make sure that it's accurate and current. Um, and that's simply what we have for you tonight. Um, and the last thing I would say, we have briefed Alderman Browning, um, on this request. This is within this ward. Um, we sat down with him along with the planning staff in early October to cover a lot of the same information as we go forward to, to working with him, um, as we continue, um, on this and related campus development issues. So, again, we thank you for the time. Uh, we ask for your support of this request, and, you know, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. What else, um, Miss Blaine? If you would just stay there in case there are questions, you can correct it to the appropriate person. So you're not going back and forth.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, with that, it is time, I will entertain a motion for public hearing.
So, Commissioner Cal.
Second, Bradley.
And move by Commissioner Cal. Uh, get on second by Alderman Clark Harbor, call for vote.
Alderman Clark Harbor. Hi. Commissioner Banton.
Hi.
Mr. Boas.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley.
Hi.
Commissioner Garminia.
Hi.
Mr. Keon.
Hi.
Judge Rother.
Hi.
Motion President, uh, President Boninat.
With that, thank you very much. The public hearing is open. Uh, to show, do we have any registered for public hearing?
None.
Present point, presently none physical, uh, Scott, any online? Okay, public hearing call going once. Public hearing call going twice. Public hearing call going three times. With that and no response, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Has been moved by Commissioner Boy, second by Commissioner Cal. Call for vote. Call for previous roll, and again, any objections? Hearing no objections, the, the public hearing is closed. Uh, with that, the next thing is that we do entertain Commissioners, uh, question for Commissioners. I'll begin with Alderman Clark Harbor, and then, uh, Commissioner Ban, Jake Banton, probably her.
I don't have any questions. I'd just appreciate the time you all pulled out, can answer my questions.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Banton, any questions?
Couple of quick questions. Um, overall, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with the concept. I'm just curious. Um, I can see a huge benefit to, uh, Wash U and BJC for having such a zoning overlay. Aside from, like, streamlining the review process on the city's end, what, what is the benefit, really, of, of, of having this? I mean, if there's only two in the city, the Danforth and the Medical Center Campus, now, is there reason there's only those two, and we don't have one at, like, Sluse Campus or SSM's, you know, camp, or hospital campus? So just because they're less politically connected?
I can, uh, answer part of that question, maybe not why this tool isn't used in those other districts. So I, I think there are other kind of land use tools in, in place in those cases, but, uh, it's not, if you would jump down to the underlying zoning district map. I mean, so I think streamlining is part of it, but also if you're just looking at sort of all of these parcels and their different and very diverse zoning designations, of, of course, it would be a very complicated process, but also, I'm not sure, and I, so I'm gonna provide this information also, pause for my colleague Mary Hart Burton to provide any, any addition, but I'm not sure that there are, um, districts within our certain code that allow for the types of uses, um, and also the physical form of those uses in combination that makes sense specifically in the Washington University Medical Center. So, um, I think that there, this overlay, not only does it simplify the, the process, but it also kind of explicitly enables the types of uses that make sense in this part of the city, uh, as part of the development of, uh, these institutions. Mary, uh, is there anything you would add?
Thank you, Miriam. Yes, um, I was just gonna use the height as an example. When you look at the boundaries on the map that you have up, uh, for zoning, there are very few of the underlying zoning districts that would allow for the height of the buildings that the medical complex needs. So, in my mind, that's one benefit from having this overlay district. Um, we don't get tied up with a lot of variances at the Board of Adjustment for height, um, and they get to continue in making improvements to the hospital. Um, we do have another overlay district, the Planned Unit Development. Um, it's, tends to be used for smaller projects. I think one of the reasons, another reason that we don't see many of the CUPs is because I believe there's a requirement that they have to be 15 acres or more, and we just don't have those large parcels of land in the city. Um, so, that's my two cents on it.
Oh, that's, that's very helpful, thank you. And, uh, yeah, I know, want to avoid those fun Board of Adjustment hearings.
Yeah, I think we were together on one.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and last, last question is, um, I read the enabling, um, ordinance for, for this back, back, and it, there was a stipulation that, uh, the campus provides the city a yearly update where projects that are happening in the district, is that happening?
Yes, yeah, we received the update several months ago.
Perfect. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton, with that, Commissioner Boas, any questions?
No questions. It's great to have you as a member of the community. It's been wonderful to watch you develop and help me.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garminia.
I have a couple of questions, too. Um, and thank you to Commissioner Banton for asking his. Um, I have, uh, one question I have for the planning department is, um, is, can in, oh, a property owner other than Wash U or one of its affiliates apply to be added to the CUP?
I don't believe so, no.
It doesn't, it, it wasn't listed in one of your three requirements.
Oh, I, I think that may be explicitly described in the enabling ordinance, but it's not one review requirements for considering amendments.
So how does it work when, um, Wash U has a lot of affiliate organizations? Like, do they update, like, their, the approved organizations that are allowed to take advantage of the CUP?
That might be, sort of, how you think of affiliates and who is included?
Right.
Might be a good question.
Um, well, I, again, I think the CUP specifies what entities consist or comprise the Washington University Medical Center Campus. So again, okay. Hospitals, Siteman Cancer Center, um, the Washington University School of Medicine. Um, uh, and, you know, the last two amendments that we have made of this ordinance of the boundary description, you know, were specifically to remove parcels that we had sold to another entity. Because again, the guidance we received from area from planning, not from the building division from planning, was that, um, you know, those entities cannot, you know, uh, take advantage of the provisions of the CUP. And so the appropriate thing to do would be to remove them, those parcels from the boundary. And so, um, that's how we've approached it in the past. I can't think of another, um, affiliate of the university that would, um, you know, somehow be, um, able to take advantage beyond what's already, you know, described in the ordinance. Um, so I'm looking to my colleagues to see if anyone would answer their question.
That was, that was a good answer, because it was, that was part of my, like, my second question was, what happens when Wash U sells a property that's in the CUP? So, um, this is, that was a helpful answer, so I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm gonna, um, planning department, I'm definitely interested in learning more about, um, how, like, the overlays are established, like, the different varieties of overlays, um, between the CUP and the other ones that are, um, established for Sluse, um, you know, master development, um, just so we're, I'm aware of, like, all the options before, um, organizations when they want to do interesting holistic development that might break a few rules. So appreciate, uh, appreciate your answers to my questions, and, um, would appreciate any further guidance on the topic, but, uh, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garminia. Uh, Commissioner Cal?
No, no questions. Thank you for coming, joining us.
All right.
I have a really simple question, because I can't get my bearings. What's the one centered spot in the middle of this, that open spot on the map?
That is the University of Health Sciences Pharmacy. It used to be called St. Louis College of Pharmacy.
Okay.
Right, so that's, that is not a, in Washington, that's not a Washington University Medical Center Campus. That's a completely separate instance.
Thank you, I just did not get my bearings around that location.
Good question.
Uh, with that, uh, prior to the, uh, act- Uh, with that, uh, prior to the, uh, action, Don, is there anything you want to comment on or?
Well, I, I think we understand as we talk about the assembly of Washington University.
I may ask you still a little bit, I'm not sure.
Affiliated firms, that this is a toolbox that is allowing the campus and the cohesiveness and their effectiveness. So it's been established for a long time, uh, and, uh, I urge you to approve it.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, I asked staff if you would review the recommendation of the recommendation from the commission.
Yes, um, staff finds that the proposed amendment meets the three criteria described by the CUP ordinance uh, for reviewing amendments is in conformity with the strategic land use plan, the land settlement, or space comprehensive plan, and we do recommend uh, approval and recommendation to the Board of All.
Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Count, second by Commissioner Boas, would that call for vote? Call for previous role, do I hear any objection?
Objection from Alderman Cone.
Oh, okay. Uh, call for both please.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Auto Woman Clark Hubbard, aye. Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Boas, aye. Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Garmidia.
Aye.
Mr. Keon, aye. Judge Strader.
Aye.
Uh, President Bunny, aye.
Thank you. Uh, with that, it will move forward to the, to the Board of Aldermen and welcome to our partners in here and broke up with that. Uh, take a moment of personal privilege simply to recognize Alderman Cone who's online, who is suffering from the COVID. We hope you're well and decent enough to join online. Looking forward to seeing your bright smiling face one day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, and with that, the second item is presented by Maryam. Oh, whoa. It presented by Don. Do we need to reset?
No, it got, it got resolved on the back end.
So yes, Mr. Chairman, you are correct. I am making a presentation of materials on this one item uh, and some directed report stuff. It's the chapter 99 blighting and redevelopment plan. And I'm underdressed. I should be in a tux. This is a momentous occasion for the city of St. Louis of how this redevelopment plan came about and what you're going to hear about is its content. Uh, so, uh, we're pleased. Uh, the other part I should say is I'm speaking to you partly because I'm so excited about what this toolbox does uh, and what the work has come from the citizens and the legal, uh, legal aid of Eastern Missouri to help prepare this, but it actually comes to us. They've heard it, but it comes to us from LCR. So Zach is here. It is a chapter 99 and LCRA plan. Uh, we just heard of campuses and places that are large. Uh, there are redevelopment plans that are in the city that are large, 200 plus that we've often done by a blighting study first and then a redevelopment plan under the 353 rules. And that's been a planning commission action, but this is a chapter 99 and LCRA action. So, so Zach is with us tonight on Zoom. Uh, with that, give me the next slide. And our resolution before you proposes this chapter 99 blighting study and redevelopment. And you may have heard through the last months that there's been more than one blighting study that has come percolated up in this geography. And you see the geography is just in North St. Louis, uh, with the, the boundaries shown that has a donut shape shake. My easy way of telling you in the center of the donut is NGA. But this blighting study initially was done, uh, and what you see tonight is a combination of that blighting study updated. You can see in your materials that we sent out. It's a very complete blighting study, uh, professionally done and incorporated in the redevelopment plan and blighting study. It was prepared and, uh, LCR worked on that and had helped with that. But the, but the document with the redevelopment plan has been submitted to LCR. Not, there's not a developer, there's not anybody that we're going to quiz about their, their development rolling here. Uh, was submitted by else, by legal services of Eastern Missouri on behalf of the St. Louis Place Community Association and the Jeff Vanderloo Whole New Area Two Neighborhood Development Association. Uh-huh. Sounds grassroots. It is grassroots. Uh, now I'm going to turn and smile because there's some people from St. Louis Place here that I've known for a long time. Uh, that have been affected and looking at the planning in this area. So it's pretty exciting. Did I say it was big? Well, bet you I did. It's 821 acres in size. 185 city blocks. And it's primarily in the St. Louis Place and the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhoods. A little portion that goes in this car square name. Yeah. So we're going to review it to some adopted plans, the plan for the neighborhood of the fifth ward, the Jeff Vanderloo plan, and let's go to the next slide. So here we are. Uh, it's the context, uh, you can see in this aerial photograph. Again, that carve out in the middle, which is where the NGA campus is and under construction and the Sensian, uh, facility. And then the boundaries are, are essentially the St. Louis, uh, the neighborhoods, uh, with the boundaries being technically those very large streets uh, and a portion of Pruitt-Agco. So yeah, it's large. It's good. Uh, one of the things, this is a chapter 99 redevelopment plan. Uh, and in the same geography, remember what's in the middle of this is the NGA. And the whole principle of the NGA arriving on the scene is it's a catalytic development for our, our area economy and a catalytic, uh, development for good things to happen in the neighborhood for the residents that are there and for the empty spaces that haven't been developed. One of the things that, that we've seen before at the planning commission is a requirement via, uh, LCR, LCRA actually on the land transfer to NGA that there be certain protections via zoning around the site. Cause it's a federal Defense Department facility, Air Force facility. So long and the short of it is there is a previous planning commission action on the area that's hatched. It's a zoning toolbox, another overlay of a special use district that prohibits some certain uses. Uh, one, it prohibits certain heights and, and, and prohibits certain things related to electronics and things that might interfere or cause concern for the, for the, uh, NGA. We've done that. Now, here's why I should be wearing a tux and dance. And this, uh, yeah, and nobody wants to see me dance.
Oh, yes we do. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we do.
So there are these, these three things that this plan provides for. And at the end, I'm going to make sure that Zach is available for questions and Peter Hoffman from the legal aid is, is with us. And he corrects anything that I have missed or, but these three bullet points is that within this, remember, we don't have any at the moment. If there's a project greater than 1 million, there's a recommendation of, of, in this redevelopment plan adopted by LCR sent to us, we're going to act on it tonight, go get acted and, uh, active, uh, activated through the ordinance process is proposals over 1 million. Uh, need to provide a public presentation. And that public presentation will go to a group that's formed in these neighborhoods to review such. I'm going to jump to step number three. Yeah, it's a chapter, it's a redevelopment plan. There is property acquisition through eminent domain. But within this redevelopment plan, there's parameters that narrow how that can happen and who it can happen. It's not to be owner occupied, uh, it ceased operations condemned by the city and more. In other words, it's a area that we know is large scale. It's eminent domain against bad actors or in some cases to help with clearing of title. So development can go on. But here's the big one. Here's, here's the, uh, tux with tails is residential tax abatement. Owner occupant housing tax abatement is essentially a tax freeze for 10 years at 100, for only eligible owners of property at the time that this ordinance goes into effect. If they invest in their residentially, they own and live there, but it may be other units than just one unit. Invest $2,000. They benefit from the tax abatement part of L, LCR. They apply and their taxes are frozen at the current amount for 10 years. So I, to let Peter come at the end, there's just, it put a, a, a more of a point on that. But that frozen is not mean that because $2,000 increased your, your, your assessed value. It's a fro, freezing so that you're protected from anything that happens that's uplift to the whole market. So if you're there now, you get protection from that tax. So that's, that's the middle one important, the next, next. Yeah, just sort of hint on that in the same map, there's, there's some identification from Jonathan. Uh, legal aid has looked at it, Zach has looked at it. In essence, there's a, in this area about 500 sites and properties that qualify for that doing the $2,000 investment to get the tax. Next. Uh, again, this is just another, uh, version of showing where those properties are scattered through, uh, those about 500. Yeah, we got to compare. So we, we were comparing and doing the detailed work of saying to previous loop amendments and redevelopment plans that we've been there. Yes, you'll recall there was a redevelopment plan, uh, for the Pruitt-Agco site and for the NGA site. We've seen that. We changed the plans as a result of that. Uh, and this is just documentation for that. Next. Yep. Again, uh, we have superimposed on this, if you're up close to it, that shows the sloop categories across this whole geography. Go ahead. Yeah. Again, we have people here, uh, that I'm smiling about from these two neighborhoods. Uh, so we are comparing it and finding it in compliance with these neighborhood plans, the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood plans. Uh, so that is indeed true. Let's go to the next one. The plan for the neighborhoods of the fifth ward and, um, you know, I want to compliment, uh, April Ford Griffin, who was a new alderperson that wanted the plan for a ward. I said, no, but we do want for the neighborhoods, uh, and people here participated in that process. Uh, and, uh, we did it by neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, one of the courageous things that was done in that plan was it had a lot of vacancy just north of Katz. There was a failed attempt at a business park that did not happen. Uh, and it was that, uh, area where the NGA is now. And we're just taking a little tour. Uh, these are, these are still a scattering of sites from around geography. There is a lot of vacant land. There's some new housing, there's some scattered, uh, uh, occasions for buildings. Uh, this is not a replica of an earthquake. This is just a wide angle shot of housing along streets, St. Louis Avenue, historic district, and there's some isolated jams too. So with that, uh, let's go to the final slot, next slide. I'm open for planning commission discussion and questions. Uh, and look, I'm open for questions. Zach is open for questions and Peter Hoffman is open for questions. But I'd really like to ask Peter to come up for a few minutes and just make a couple of points of either clarity of what I brought up or, uh, other things that you would find helpful for you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Commissioners, it's okay to proceed.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, my name's Peter Hoffman. Uh, I'm managing attorney for neighborhood advocacy at legal services of Eastern Missouri. I have the privilege of representing both the JBL Neighborhood Association and the St. Louis Place Community Association in the drafting of this redevelopment plan. Uh, in May, uh, when residents first got word that there was a blighting study for their neighborhoods. Uh, they were scared, uh, confused, uh, blind, felt blindsided, uh, I think it's fair to say. And, uh, was worried. Uh, I think that what happened with the NGA originally, especially that eminent domain component, um, the for sale of people's houses could happen again, uh, as a result of this new blight study. Um, since May, um, members of both the JBL, uh, Neighborhood Association and St. Louis Place Community Association have met, uh, with attorneys from my office, volunteer attorneys for the last, uh, I guess five or six months now every Wednesday uh, to better understand how chapter 99 and chapter 353 can actually be beneficial to communities. We have heard from, uh, similarly situated neighborhoods in Kansas City, Missouri. Talked to, uh, uh, staff at Kansas City, Missouri who, uh, regularly use these larger 99 areas. Not just to incentivize development, but also to make sure that existing residents investment in their own community is protected and rewarded and that they don't bear the, the, the brunt of, uh, displacement because of rising property tax values. Um, so, uh, what we have before the planning commission today is a result, a culmination of that five months of collaboration with those neighborhood associations and with SLDC staff and LCRA staff to make sure that this is workable. Um, um, while there are 500 owner occupants and there are thriving businesses in these neighborhoods, there is also a significant amount of blight, vacancy and land speculation that's happening. And it's important to make sure that the city has eminent domain authority to deal with those problems where they exist. Uh, but we also want to recognize that there are, the reason that there's anything left to, uh, invest in is because of the sometimes lifelong contributions, uh, of these, of these communities of these neighborhoods. And, uh, their investments need to be, uh, rewarded, I guess, just as much as an outside investment would be. So that's why we have uh, suggested the residential properties tax abatement component to this plan uh, to help protect those residents from rising property values. The final component, as, uh, Don mentioned, is, uh, the inclusion of a community advisory panel for large projects over $1 million. This is an advisory panel so that residents can be informed about what's happening in their neighborhood and given an opportunity in kind of a more structured or formal way um, to, to kind of help shape or partner with that developer for any projects that are coming to the community. I think historically, this has been done by, um, you know, telling a developer to go get a letter uh, from the Neighborhood Association or somebody. Um, this is a little bit more robust engagement. Uh, but it's also, uh, ultimately advisory. Um, it is up to LCR, LCRA staff to uh, assess and evaluate and determine whether or not a particular project might need, uh, assistance through abatement or other incentives. But it gives the residents an opportunity to have a seat at the table, know what's going on, meet those developers and maybe in some way, uh, inform that development for the better of the community. So those are the three unique features. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, and, uh, on behalf of my clients, would be very grateful for your support, uh, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'll, I, I'll recognize Zach if you want to add anything at this moment or wait for any question?
No, we, uh, just to say SLDC, LCR fully supports this plan and we applaud at JV on St. Louis Place for all their hard work on this. So, and we look forward to working with them in the future.
Thank you, Zach. Uh, with that, I'll entertain the questions from the commissioners as normal. Uh, Aldermen's calling, any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair. I think that this is wonderful. I'm happy to support it and, uh, see it coming to fruition.
Thank you. Auto Woman Clark Hubbard, any questions?
No questions.
Uh, Commissioner Jake Banjin, any question?
Uh, just a comment. I, I agree. This is a momentous occasion. Appreciate Don and Peter for, uh, helping hype it up. I think it's very exciting. Um, being, being the architect on the board, I, I have to ask, with a lot of these other chapter 99 um, studies that we pass come with usually a little bit more stringent urban design. Um, recommendations or restrictions and the ones I'm seeing in this document are, are few and, and far between. And granted, I, I'm just curious, there was a mention of some urban design standards as part of the neighborhood plans that were passed a while ago. Is there a reason that this is lacking more stringent standards?
Language it was proposing, the redevelopment plan, there is some language, some guidance on this and it mirrors uh, the kind of more general and broad sort of approach that Kansas City has taken to their chapter 99 and 353s. And I think part of that, um, is due to the nature of these neighborhoods in particular, the amount of vacancy, the amount of uh, 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 undeveloped blighted land that, uh, really those sorts of uh, design features hopefully can be addressed, addressed by the LCRA staff, but also the community advisory panel. And that also should the project can And that also should the project connect plan ultimately be amended and updated and adopted. But that will also shape how these development tools can be used. So we didn't feel it was necessary to add too many restrictions. Uh within the plan itself, because there are other ways that those developments could be shaped and we didn't want to uh uh overcook it, I guess, in that sense.
So I'll use that as a segue to say, in my final remarks, I'll be addressing some of the things that Peter just mentioned about the project connect neighborhood plans. That will help with that, Jake. But Zach, do you want to say anything about about uh the 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 true fact, though? That every building permit uh in this area will come to LCR A for their staff review.
Correct, every building permit, every fence that's going to be built will be be shown to us before we approve it, so. So we'll have our hands on it, sorry.
No, that's that's good and I uh I'm I'm excited to hear that the neighborhoods will be setting up a a a review committee. Um I chair a development review committee in my neighborhood, so if anyone that's currently in attendance there. Um has any questions about how the the West End does it, feel free to contact me, but very exciting. So no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton, Commissioner Boyer.
This is a great plan, I have a very small question to ask. If I am in one of those owner occupied properties, living safe with my adult child and I pass away, does that benefit transfer any weight to my child?
Uh that's a great question, um so uh actually, uh our our program at Legal Services helps those families get into title. Um they need to show proof of ownership under the plan. So if they are living in heirs property or inherited property, they would need to go through probably a legal procedure, which they're going to want to go through anyway. Before they go and get a bank loan or able to sell that property. Uh just a plug for Legal Services Neighborhood Advocacy Program, we provide those types of services to families living in heirs property. Uh on a daily basis, we get those calls, so families with those issues can be referred to the neighborhood by us. So we can fix those titled issues so they can take advantage of this uh tax abatement and set up for improvements they think.
Great, thanks so much.
Commissioner Bradley, any questions?
No, just a comment, I think it's a great project and what everybody else says, I think it's uh very exciting and. Thanks for a great presentation, Don, no questions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Garmidian.
Question about how the two thousand dollar um. Investment requirement for the owner occupied tax abatement, um how did you come to that uh number?
Uh it was through a negotiation, uh I think originally residents wanted a a lower number to trigger that. Uh but we also have to balance, you know, this is money that could be going towards schools and roads and bridges and so. Uh it's important to not set that kind of arbitrarily low. And so the amount uh that we thought was feasible, uh knowing that many of the residents of these neighborhoods are on limited or fixed incomes. We thought two thousand dollars uh was kind of the sweet spot where it's attainable. Um the other thing that we've uh thought about, and I think it would be a possibility under this plan is if anyone is receiving. Uh home repair assistance through the city of St. Louis, say through healthy home repair. Uh that amount would also be able to to qualify that recipient for the abatement. So it doesn't need to be their own expenditure, if they're receiving a charitable improvement to their property, they could also receive the benefit. And uh we're working with uh staff at at SLDC, uh LCR A. To hopefully maybe streamline that application. Uh and make it easier and more accessible for folks who might benefit from that uh benefit. Um the other thing that is included in the plan is a encouragement really that the city um annually provide those five hundred. Uh owners uh notice that this incentive is available and to apply and so. Uh should we have the good fortune of having this be adopted and passed, signed into law. Uh we look forward to collaborating with the city on making sure as many residents within the footprint can take advantage of this benefit as possible.
Wonderful, um I'm glad I asked, that's a lot of great extra information. Um for people in that neighborhood to be aware of and for us as at the Board of Aldermen to know about, so we can promote it. Um so I look forward to seeing this come before us as a board bill, thank you, no more questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Dale.
No, no questions, just thank you, everything to Peter, Legal Services and the residents who are here today, this is a big deal. And Don, thank you for wearing a suit jacket for them. No, thank you all so much.
Thank you, uh question, is it's a one time expenditure or can it be accumulated in multiple costs? And then it triggers or how does it?
I'll defer to uh uh SLDC staff, I think it was envisioned as a single expenditure. Uh because you have to prove those receipts and there needs to be some preapproval for that abatement. There does need to be some paperwork associated with it as required by law, maybe a before and after picture, a receipt. Um I don't know if we pin down exactly what the timeframe would be, is that a year, is that six months? And I would defer to kind of uh standard practices of LCR A.
I I we would need some type of before photo and after photo show that you've improved the property in some way to to. To get rid of blight in some way, so that's basically would be the key there, so. Um there we could be flexible, but we can't be too flexible on some of this, so. Um I would say, once this passes, moving forward, we can work with homeowners on that, so. That helps.
I'm I'm looking, you know, at homeownership, if you're putting a thousand dollars in windows. And then you're doing a thousand dollars in some kind of roof repair, that's your, that's your expenditure, but that you typically don't expend it at one time.
Right.
And we're gonna have that cash option.
Yeah, and I think that's why the community education component of this is going to be so important to let people know. Working with the city, working with neighborhood associations, to let owners know, hey, if you've got. Maybe you need to get that tuck pointing done or get that new deck put on. Well, let's wait and and let's get you filling out the paperwork so that you do that the right way so you can maximize your benefit. So it's going to be an ongoing uh process to make sure that people are aware of uh the the program and how to take advantage of it.
So I think it's a great program opportunity for homeowners at that. Uh no more questions from the chair, uh Don, if you want to just review the recommendation from the staff, I'll entertain both.
I'll I'll do a little bit more than that.
So in dance time.
What one is uh. As Peter said, uh this two thousand dollars, there needs to be some evangelical things doing like that. Like letters to them or reminding the property that's can do it. And he mentioned some of the city staff and city agencies that he's writing, and that also includes uh repair programs administered by CDA. To be in the mix to to go to this. Uh the second thing I want to talk about is, at this time. Uh we were expecting within a month or two of this meeting. That the project connect neighborhoods, which have been undergoing a planning process. Uh which is now uh is going through a a a period where one team of consultants. Has ceased uh to be continue to be involved, so there is not. Planning documents for the six neighborhoods of which two neighborhoods are included here, ready to come to the planning commission at this time. And so when we talk about this being compliant plans, it's in compliance with our current plans. And in essence, what that means is if somebody with a development comes in. They need to be in compliance with the existing zoning from the old plans. Uh to get our approval if we have to vote on 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 that type of action. I say that just to say that the the neighborhood planning process with Project Connect. Will re-energize into a closure sometime during twenty 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 twenty-four. To have those adopted plans and those adopted plans may have changes to the zoning. May have uh sophisticated things to the zoning like form based code and et cetera. And may very well there, at that time, when they come, we adopt them. It may also modify LCR A's uh work in modifying this redevelopment plan. Uh regarding design standards and such, so just do that. And then say, listen, it's a long winded name for this thing, but this is transformative. Uh you've heard how it is for a a whole layer of benefits for folks. Uh it is the uh hundred eighty-two acres. Uh and we request and recommend approval of the proposed redevelopment.
Thank you very much, with that, I would entertain most of the vision.
Second.
Alderman Call.
Aye.
Alderman Clark covered.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz, aye. Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmidia.
Aye.
Commissioner Kian, aye. Judge Dragan.
Aye.
The motion passed, the offense is voted out.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and Don, you got one badge, wow. Uh with that, there are just a couple of delegated items or other conversations from the staff. Uh I'm not sure who's gonna make those conversations, they're both standing and and whispering amongst each other.
Uh well, because you know, you didn't get to see me dance. But we were going to show you a video uh from Channel Four uh that was shot on Monday night. During the public uh introduction to the sloop update. And uh Miriam's telling me, we're gonna send it to you as a link uh for all of you to look, look at. Uh it's a pretty well done video and with that, Miriam's going to give an update about the strategic land use plan update.
Yeah, my update really will just be a handoff to Dan Deoka of Inner Borough Partners, who's with us virtually online, is going to. Provide a quick update about where we are, it's not action item, but it's a quick update about where we are in the process and. Um some of the fun we had certainly this week kicking off the public engagement part of this process.
And one vote note I might make is I think that ends anything that we have to have a vote on tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
So we we may have people to drop on.
Dan?
Thanks, Miriam. Will do, thank you, uh so my name is Dan Dioka, as Miriam said, and. I'm with Inner Borough and we are the consultants who are leading this the update of the Strategic Land Use Plan. And um we did uh have a action packed, fun filled couple of days in St. Louis. I just got back uh this morning and uh already missed St. St. Louis. I'm going to give you a a very short update on where we are in the process. So I think I've I've been told that I have maybe five or six minutes, so I'm going to make the most of it. And what I'm going to do is share some slides with you, just just to again, give you an update on where we are in the process. I don't know that anyone needs a refresher about the sloop, but I'm just going to give a quick one anyway. So um what a lot of people, you know, don't know what it is or why it's important, so as I think most folks here know, certainly the folks on the commission know. It authorizes what kind of development can happen where. So redevelopment plans, only text amendments, rezonings, all these things have to conform with the sloop. So basically legally establishes the community aspirations for future development. And it needs an, it needs an update because it was last done in two thousand and five and a lot has changed since two thousand and five. There have been many amendments, twenty to be precise. Uh but I think this is a chance for a holistic update, really comprehensively consider how land use can best reflect St. Louis's current conditions. But it's not just defense, it's like a really good opportunity, I think, to. Uh you know, make a plan that better reflects priorities like economic justice, walkability, transit oriented development, climate resilience. And so on, so this is the existing sloop, just to remind you, it's ten designations, which you see on the left. And this map, which you see on the right, so this is what we're tasked with.
I'm not seeing, I'm just seeing your opening slide here on the screen.
Weird, thank you for letting me know there, Jake. Well, there is crossed, okay, uh so this is the, this is the existing sloop, the map on the right, the ten designations on on the left. Quick sense of like where we are in the process. We divide, so we're we're in the analyze phase, we kind of divided the process into prepare, analyze, vision, update, adopt, it's an eighteen month long process. And so what are we doing now in the analyze phase? We're reviewing existing plans and documents, we actually just just uh got got through with the review of that. We are looking at uh existing conditions, so we're doing an analysis of housing and transit and vacancy and land ownership. And things like that, we're reviewing the existing plan, we actually just uh completed a draft where we. Did a kind of diagnosis of diagnosis of what works and what doesn't and how people use it and how people don't. And how people might like to use it, we also have just launched our engagement, that's what I mostly want to focus on tonight in my remaining three minutes. Just to give you a sense of what we're up to and what we got um coming soon. First off, we launched our website, so hopefully most of you had a chance to see it, it's just sloop dash STL dot com. And we're gonna keep this updated. And we're also going to be introducing lots of new content that's um interesting and relevant, we want to actually try to create a feedback loop between some of the analysis we're doing. Some of the feedback we're getting from folks. And then some of the recommendations we eventually make, so we now have like a a kind of brand for the project. So we we've got these business cards that we will give to anybody who wants one, which has a QR code, which will take you to the website. We've got a social media presence, which we're happy about, we already have like, I don't know, seventy followers or something, which. You know, for an update of a strategic land use plan, it's pretty good, we want to get that way up, so if you don't, if you use Instagram and you don't currently follow. Sloop, please follow it, it's just at sloop underscore STL. And we're going to be keeping all kinds of good content on that, including like polls and fun facts and all kinds of stuff. So we just um had a our first public workshop on Monday at the Forest Park Visitor Center and. I think it was a success, so here's some some just kind of introductory boards that 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 we made for folks just to explain. You know, what the sloop is and how it's used and why I need an update and stuff like that. Um we formed a steering committee, which we're super excited about and last night we met for the first time with the committee. So the these are folks that were uh selected by lottery, we thought um that's an emerging best practice and and kind of. Forming steering committees and we've done it before and we've had a lot of success. We had an overwhelming response, we had hundreds of people apply and say they wanted to be on committee. And we're thrilled with the results of the lottery. Um so here we are meeting um at the Forest Park Voyager Room last night and just kind of kicking off, getting just kind of like a meet and greet. Um here's our kind of schedule going going forward, I won't go into too much detail, but we're going to be meeting five times with the steering committee. Although folks on the steering committee will have a lot of work to do between meetings, we already gave them some homework. Uh and will continue to ask them to do homework, we really need them to help um to be a sounding board and to. Make sure we're making a plan that reflects the aspirations of people in St. Louis, um we're also in the process of forming a working group. Sorry, these are working groups, these are a little different than the steering committee, so we did them like um instead of having mobility and transportation. Working groups, which is the traditional way to do it, we decided to do them around um things that we aspire for. Or outcomes we'd like to see, so quality of life, resilience and equity. Um so um we're we we also launched some some games and activities. Um they're fun, but they're not just fun, they're meant to give us a good sense of like what people aspire to for different um urban areas in the city. So this was an activity that we did at our first public workshop, we made these ten kind of urban areas that loosely loosely. Parallel the ten designations that are currently in the sloop, so like residential and open space is really like the NDA designation, if you're familiar with the sloop. Um downtown is basically the specialty mixed use area. Um and so we just basically um asked asked folks to to pick one of these these boards and answer these questions on the right. So for example, like what works well about this area, um what has potential? But then we gave people this kind of pool, this this kind of tackle box of different land uses, basically. Anything we could think of that we could find in the city of St. Louis from parking lots to factories to. Um you know, row homes and things and just ask folks to 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 put stickers over. Um so here you see them doing that now, just to give us a sense of like what's missing in your neighborhood or what what other things. Would you like to see, so we haven't analyzed the results yet, so I can't really report back on what 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 we saw. But we did, we did scan in um all the sheets that we that we got back to hear somebody talking about how. Um you know, pretty much um parks are are great, we they we don't need that much more, here's somebody who took a pass at the the. The BIPA zone. Um and basically use it as an opportunity to say, the problem with the zone is that like it doesn't offer riverfront access, so they just drew the riverfront in there. And a whole bunch of programs that created connections to the river, so. Um we're we're learning a lot, walking tours are also part of our community engagement and so we had a tour in the bill, which was fantastic. And um we're going to continue to do walking tours with, this one was with the steering committee. But we're going to start doing them with the public, there's nothing like getting people to talk about land use. When they're out, actually out in neighborhoods, it's makes it a lot less abstract. Um we're about to launch a newsletter, um which the we're going to have. Which the, we're going to have multiple, multiple issues of this. The first issue is just basic stuff about what the sloop is. How you can get involved, how it works, how it doesn't work. So this is just, this is. This is the unfolded version. It actually folds up into something. And so it's not as confusing as, as it looks here. But this should be out and about and available in the coming weeks. And that's just kind of it by way of an update. So. Lots more to come. But I'm already over time, so I'm going to stop blabbing.
Great. Thank you, Daniel, for that. Any other comments from staff at this point?
Only that. Yeah, we're really excited about that process. Thanks so much, Dan, being with us tonight to provide an update and we'll keep. Commissioners and of course, the public informed at every step.
And other things, last time we did a, Jonathan did a report on neighborhood planning. And I talked a little bit more about what Project Connect and the excitement of. This chapter ninety-nine being forwarded now with a recommendation for you guys to the board hall. Okay, that's all. As sure, I would ask that you consider being sure that the mission is on that contact list for them. So that we're getting it automatically as opposed to having to go get it. That is pushed out to us. That's not like the newsletter or some of the other things. Other items, just so that we're, we're aware.
Absolutely. Yeah, we.
I think it'd be beneficial that officials get that without having to go search for it. With that, any other business that needs to be covered?
Not tonight.
Well, prior to closing the meeting, I hope that everybody has a safe holiday, no matter how you spend it. And hope that if there's an empty seat at your table, you find out that it can be filled by others in life. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I know.
I heard it.
Second.
By Commissioner Boyes, I think it was Commissioner Bradley. That closed the meeting. With that, maybe a German, happy holidays to all.